This particular point in time is to maximize the efficiency and certainly the economy of needs and to keep the power poles where they are with the intention of positioning the bays between them. And in the future, if the funds are there to drop those lines underground or the need arises to do that, then that can be done. But the idea here at this point in time is not to have that as part of the project.
Sorry, one more question. So you mentioned that parking down on the left side, on the north side for other uses, it would be?
Down in here.
Yeah, down there. Other uses? What were the other uses?
Well, people, I'm going to show you some slides coming up here about how the building is not just for fire. Obviously, that's its main use, but it's obviously also operating as an emergency operations center as well as for the public and as well as for training. So I'll kind of show you some of the spaces in there that are being used.
Okay, next. Oh, it's getting ahead then.
Yeah, that's okay. That's good. So are there any other questions about the site? So when we jumped into the floor plans, and again, we spent quite a bit of time going back and forth with the building committee and certainly the fire department and everybody involved, what you see here in this component are really what we call the quarters. It only has to do with training. There's a kitchen and day room, offices, and washroom facilities. That's the only components that are really contained within that zone. And I'll go through them in a little bit more specificity here in a second. And then the blue zone are actually what we refer to as the operational quarters. And so those are your three apparatus bays that you see. And what this allows us to do by having tandem apparatus bays, it allows us to give the freedom to the department now or in the future to deploy in two different directions if they have more frontline vehicles or to certainly back in and have their frontline vehicles facing the apron with their second line vehicles in behind. The spaces that you find in this area right here are what we call the operational spine. Those are all operational quarters. So those are directly related to the operation of the fire hall or fire department as it in terms of its technical side. And what is contained in there is we have a compressor room at the top. We have what's called the rip and run or dispatch where the information about where the hall is, how they're going to deploy, and as the volunteers come in, who's going to go to what vehicle located at its top here. We have what's called SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus room. That's a clean room which allows the team to fill their bottles, to clean their equipment, to manage that all on-site themselves. And so that needs to be a separate room, certainly away from the rest of the apparatus. Then in this area here, we have gear storage. It used to be in the past that having your turnout gear stored in the apparatus base was acceptable. Now, by today's current industry standards, that is no longer acceptable. Moving it off the bay into its own separate rooms allows a lot of things. We can clean it and then keep it relatively clean within that room and it's not exposed to the vehicles anymore. And it also allows the equipment to dry. So we have racks that are not, they're industry standard racks, nothing crazy from an expense side, but they allow the gear to very effectively be maintained. And because it is expensive gear, you want to make sure that you have the ability to maintain it over time. And that's what that room really allows for. Built into that room also is a little bit of expansion. So we have a little bit of expansion there. As we move further down the spine, we have a stair going up to an open mezzanine at the top. And we have a little bit of utility and storage in this zone too. And this is the main thoroughfare from the remainder of the hall into the bays. There are also entrances here at this point, down this corner, and certainly at the front. And this allows for the team to get into the bays as quickly as possible, no matter what's going on. Is it a training night? Nobody's on site? People are in the building? Wherever they are, we want to get them to those vehicles and to their equipment as quickly as we can. Below that, we have a small workshop, which is sort of the dirty workshop side of things. And then we have a decontamination washroom and a utility room. And the utility room will be outfitted for a gear washer in the future so that your gear can certainly be washed on-site at that sort of industrial level and be taken care of the best that it can. Moving through into the rest of the hall, we have a training room here which shows a future dividing wall which will allow the team to use the training room as two separate rooms. This is also a very valuable component for the emergency operations center side of the operation of the hall as well as any other training that's done. And I'll show you that in two seconds in my next slides here. We have a little bit of storage directly off the training room and certainly a little storage in here. Then we move into a combined kitchen and day room area, two small washrooms, one washroom with a shower. And we have a communications or radio room, training office, deputy chief and chief, emergency planning, and then a public washroom and a very small entry. I don't know if there are any questions at this time of the floor plan? No, we're good? Okay, great. All right, onward. So what we also have planned is for future expansion. So what this really shows you is the ability for the upper floor to be designed to take on a second level in the future. And we're showing the positions of stairways here, looking at our exiting requirements and looking at the overall area or whereabouts we would like to stop or present the fact that the second floor extends to. The idea is to make sure that the entire perimeter is able to accommodate a second level looking into the future. Into the apparatus bays, I had referred to that small stair that was going up before. It leads us to an open mezzanine, which is, as I say, is open to the apparatus base, both the two small rooms at the end, one mechanical, one electrical.
And that mezzanine would provide a lot of storage for the emergency social services supplies and that kind of thing?
Absolutely, yeah. And we often also make provisions to provide a hoist off one of the structural beams. So we're using the structure for a secondary purpose there and creating a hoist where people can lift pallets of materials up so they're not having to truck them all the way up the stairs. So it's a really nice use of that space. And by keeping it open, we're able to lift things over the pony wall and use the storage. And it's very flexible as well.
Okay, sorry, more I need to understand here. So the second floor?
Not being built now.
The second, okay.
Yeah.
It's not being built now, you're making allowance for it, except for you have a mezzanine sort of above the?
That's correct. Because the bays themselves need to be of a certain height anyway in order to accommodate the trucks, the exhaust system, the overhead doors, and so on. So we're using the height to our advantage by placing some of the operational quarters in that volume and then above that, using that area for storage.
Okay.
And for utility.
Laurie?
So the maximum square footage for other purposes on a potential second floor is around 3,000 square?
Yeah, just over, 3,200 square feet.
Okay. And if you were to sort of give a top little description of what's getting built here, it's post-disaster, it's roughly 10,000 square feet on the first level. It's expandable in the future. And it's on how many acres?
It's on one acre. Yeah. Thank you. Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, sorry.
Yes?
So you said 3,200 square feet?
On the second floor.
On the second floor.
10,000 on the first.
Well, it's a little less. A little less than 10,000, yeah. But, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's, yeah, it's a pretty good summary. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. And then what we did is we took a look at the building itself again and we just wanted to demonstrate how the building operates other than what I've described to you already, which is really its main function, which is for the fire department. But it also operates for them as part of a training facility as well. So as Alison had mentioned, it's not really the training outside here that's important. It's the training inside. And so we've designed the training room to be designed, to be used in two different pieces. Certainly, the kitchen itself and the day room is used for e-training and then we have a training office. And here, we've demonstrated also the decontamination border. So we very much are aware of the idea of contaminants, the flow of those contaminants through from the operations side into the quarter side and your team taking those home with them to their families. That's something we really want to focus on trying to improve here and avoid at all costs. And so that's why we have a decontamination shower and changing and washroom on this side. That's again why we have gear washing facilities being provided and why none of these rooms on the operational spine here enter into the rest of the hall. There is only one connection and that's one of the reasons why we want to control that flow of contaminants from the dirty spaces into the clean spaces. In addition to that, the green spaces here identify how the space is now not only used for regular fire department operations, but certainly for training and now as an emergency operations side as well. So when the building is under emergency operation activation, all of the spaces that you see in the green here will change and have a secondary use. So even the offices, so we have the emergency operations planner down here right near the entry, the entryway will serve as a security point there. So if we have to meet with the public or you have to do anything along those lines, you can do that all at the front. The two offices will no longer be training and deputy chief. They will transform into one or two members of the EOC component and they'll be used for that as well. The radio room will be focused on EOC, so that's ham radio room and right in this location here. Certainly, the washrooms will be used for that and often the storage as well will be storing tools for operation activation. And so it will again switch from fire and those things will be stored in the emergency operations side will come out into the training room. Training room, sorry. Oh, sorry. Yeah.
This may not be a question for you, Alison. So all of the EOC function will move to this hall?
That front quarter would be Jen's office and then the fire chief and deputy chief on the right. And if we had an incident, that training room would be the incident room and the day room would be the place where they could leave and go and get something to eat and sit down and get a bit of a rest and stuff like that.
And the materials and supplies that are currently at the satellite hall would move here?
Well, some may move, some might stay because there's two locations.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And then the final components as well as the public usage, so it isn't unlikely that courses will be held at the fire hall. There are a variety of first aid, emergency planning, committee meetings that may be held here. And those will have, because of the various types of entrances and exits that we have, the washrooms and so on, those can all be held within this space as well without having to really release sort of security into the operations side of the fire department. Because as much as everybody wants to see the trucks, we really don't want people playing on the trucks, which is where I would head. But anyway, so what we really want to do is focus on the quarter side of the building itself. And so the training room, as we have indicated before, certainly has exterior entrances from this side. The parking is along the left-hand side of the building here, so very easily operational from here. The washrooms would be public there. The day room and the kitchen facilities could be used depending on the type of event that it is. And certainly down at the front, we have created an accessible entry and washroom so that can handle any number of groups of people that need to use the building for any number of variety of functions.
So is the training room, some sort of sense of the size, that kind of classroom-sized building?
Yeah, absolutely.
Room row, sorry?
Absolutely, yeah. The idea is it's just over 1,000 square feet plus, it's about 1,200 square feet. So the idea is that we would divide it into two nice sized rooms, so they're very functional. I think I find sometimes when we're looking at rooms like that, the key is to make sure that when you divide them, not only is the space correct, but the shape of the room is correct because you can end up with something very weird at the end of the day if you don't want that. So the rectangular shape and locating that at the end of the building is key from that because it reduces circulation and it also allows us to divide the room very effectively into two spaces.
Am I correct in saying I'm not doing the dividing wall at the moment?
Well, I think it's up to, we're really trying to make sure that the building meets the budget. That's the key. The plan is to put all the infrastructure in place and the suggestion would be to tender it with the dividing wall as an alternate price. And if everything works out, then that comes in now, but you have the provisions to do everything you need to in the future.
And one nightmare of dividing walls is lack of soundproof.
I know. So this one's a really good one. This is an acoustic seal. It's got one of those gaskets on the top and the bottom and it has whiteboard wall on both sides. So it's, we would only promote doing a really top-notch, that's why I say, you know, they're not inexpensive items, but they're well worth it. It's not one of those kind of rollout ones.
It's not worth building it otherwise for effect?
That's correct.
The sound simply goes over the ceiling and down the other side.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Okay.
And there we go. The sun sets on the presentation. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
All right, you're up.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I got a couple of questions. And one of my primary concerns is costs from just a standalone building cost, also potential lost opportunity cost and also ongoing operating cost. So I've just got a question for that. So the first, you know, it's been mentioned a couple of times, oh, future move of expansion. Okay, so I just sort of did a rough look at how many callouts we get. And if I throw out numbers that are incorrect, please jump on me, okay? But I'm a lay guy, I'm not a fire guy, so fire guys to me that. So from 2013 to 2017, we're averaging about a call a month. That's what it works out to. And it looks like about?
Oh, no. Oh, sorry.
So good. So that's why I'm saying that, that's why I'm glad you guys are here.
Call of the year.
What's that?
That'd be a call of the year.
And about two structural fires a year, two full structural fires.
Try a couple hundred a year.
Okay. A couple of hundred structural fires?
Well, okay.
Okay, okay. So I'm just, so two structural fires a year. And so I'm wondering, in your experience building fire halls, how big are, how many fire trucks do you need on an ongoing basis? And part of the reason I say this is, you know, we have a fire truck right now, we need to replace that, almost half a million dollars. We don't have the money for it, right? So when you have six of them and they got a 20-year lifespan, you do the math, you know, you're looking at, you know, $3 million, you know, that's a lot of money. And I'm concerned that we're going to run through our fire budget, that we won't be able to keep this going. So that would be my first question, sort of.
Excuse me. I'm not sure if those are questions for our guests, are they?
Well, maybe Kim could talk a little bit about, Kim's built Gabriola's fire hall.
Right, yeah.
And I think she's familiar with Soterna and Pender and some of the other smaller communities. But as an island, we can't get somebody to drive five blocks down the road.
Well, I'd like to have Kim's respond on just, just an assessment of how many fire trucks you would need with?
And just before we go there, can I just, sorry, interject about the stats? And you guys have to talk through the chair, not respond to questions directly from the floor. But the stats that Rob quoted were from our annual reports since 2014 and it's the number of calls altogether. So those have been provided by the fire department. And they're just, they're the different types of structural fire, chimney fires, et cetera. So I'd suggest before you do cat calls, is look at the stats in your annual report.
Good.
Okay, so I can't really respond to the number of vehicles in terms of, but I can give you an idea. So our firm has designed well over 15 fire halls now throughout BC and throughout Alberta. And in that time, in terms of looking at a composite or a paid-on-call department, we have actually never designed a hall, a sort of a main hall that has been less than three days, three tandem, three deep. So three tandem means three, two deep. And the reason really of it is because much of the time mutual aid is of a concern and that means obviously groups being able to come and help you with different kinds of vehicles. When we looked at Salt Spring or we look at Gabriola or we look here at Bowen, that's a difficult one to get. Certainly, people might be on their way, but the timing of that may not be relevant for certain kinds of emergencies. So it's not unusual for a fire department to have a variety of different vehicles that require a certain number of space to house them. Vehicles come in all different sizes, but most engines are between 33 to 35 feet, most ladders around 45 feet, most pumpers and so on around 30 feet. So we really base the size of the vehicles, or sorry, the size of the bays on that rough estimate. But each group is actually very, very unique. But I can tell you overall, it is very rare for us to build anything less than three bays.
Okay. There's, it seems like in the space, there's a lot of, there's a SCBA or, you know?
SCBA.
SCBA, a decontamination room.
Sure.
Then also separate storage equipment room.
Yeah.
And I guess my question would be, what are we decontaminating? Like what's the contaminant that we're?
Yeah.
Because if I'm correct, we only do structural burn from outside, we don't go inside buildings?
Well, I think at any fire, anytime there is any kind of carcinogen, it's absorbed into the skin of people who fight the fires. Or there can be contaminants that come from an emergency. It could be bodily fluids at the same time. And anytime there's a fire of any kind, it filters onto all of your equipment, onto your body, onto your gear, onto everything that is in within a certain distance. I can't quote you the exact distance away one has to stand from that, but I can tell you there have been many, many studies that have been done about carcinogens and the effect that they have on firefighters over time. So what the building is trying to do is provide situations where you can make sure that those contaminants are left at the hall, that firefighters have the opportunity to decontaminate themselves and their equipment before they get into their cars and take that further into their travels. So whether that be home or where is their crime.
So for those average two structural fires, that would be what that space would be?
Yeah. I mean, I don't have the stats on that, but I can find it. There is a lot of information on the amount of carcinogens that firefighters face on a yearly, on a monthly basis and the effect of that over a long period of time. So it has really very much become part of industry standard nowadays to ensure that decontamination is brought into the building. This building has just enough. There's no overboard here. A lot of groups will have an exercise room and/or an infrared sauna that will help the group team go into a situation where they can sweat out those contaminants and further reduce the risks of cancer that is caused by those carcinogens. So it's really a very simple solution. And the way we now allow the equipment to be washed or to be kept and to be separated from the rest of the hall, that helps improves those conditions.
Just on the, just ongoing operational costs. Like we got a pretty simple fire hall.
Yeah.
This was out there a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
I don't even think it was heated, quite frankly. This is now 10,000 square foot facility with mezzanine. It's going to be running all day, every day, heating, cooling, air vac systems.
Well, the good thing about that, if I can just jump in, is that we're going to put in a very simple DDC control system that will allow you to modulate the temperature of the building. And by using some of the radiant floor conditions, we're using the mass of that, the, all of the foundation, the floors, to retain the heat and emit the heat over time. So there will be a minimum. So the idea is to create systems that allow the team when they arrive for training or any kind of classes to bump up the heat or to a comfortable condition. But the building will be maintained at a relatively low heat usage over time.
Do we have a rough ongoing operating cost of this? And I'm also thinking like servicing, let's say, the decontamination room because that's going to have to get inspected yearly and, you know, I work in municipal buildings, so I know all the, all the things that need to be done to keep everything at that. Do we have a rough estimate of what a building like this is going to cost a year to run?
Not yet, no. We can do, run an energy model certainly and get the energy costing from that. The envelope will be designed to be energy efficient for sure, but nothing overly loud. There are no triple pane windows here or anything like that. It's just good quality design.
I'm more thinking just like, like just the inspection of all the equipment, equipment maintenance, you know, those kinds of costs.
I know, to be honest, but to be, to be realistic, the equipment that you have right now in the hall, mostly the SCBA equipment, your filling station, your compressor, your two main pieces of equipment, the rest of it is just a shower. I mean, the decontamination washroom is just a shower. So there's nothing really crazy about that. The gear storage room will be maintained by a fan coil unit. And it has its own separate fan coil unit so that that exhaust can go straight to outside because it is in a semi-contaminated room. So it won't be mixed in with the rest of the building. So there's really nothing here that's being proposed that is elaborate or requires very specialty maintenance, other than the SCBA equipment, which is really a part of almost every fire hall. You're welcome.
I think I'd just like to ask, don't want to put words in your mouth, but the very facilities we're talking about and the ones that Council Wyman has asked about, they would be common to any new fire station we would build wherever it might be or whatever, right?
Correct.
Those would be basically mandated and part of any new structure.
Correct.
You couldn't build a new structure without those.
Correct.
Okay. So if you like, we're stuck with those anywhere, quite rightly, because that's what we have to put in, that's what we have to do, and we have to do it with a 50-year timeframe, not with a 2019 timeframe.
That's correct.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Well, thanks for the interesting presentation, sort of detail that I need to learn here. I'm interested in the opportunity of making this, putting a second floor on this and using it for other things.
Yes.
Because this is extremely expensive land and we don't have a lot of it.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering to turn this into a building that has a fire hall and has something else. I know they have fire halls in the city of Vancouver that, or actually Burnaby, I forget, that have housing on top, for instance.
I know those, yeah.
So could you comment on, yeah, okay. If you could comment on the opportunities to do that, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're designing the fire hall in Vancouver that has the social housing above it, 31 units. So it's a satellite hall. It's on a, on a small site as well. The opportunities are there for sure. I think what needs to be considered and a bit more study would be obviously parking, circulation to ensure, and that's one of the things we worked very hard on in Vancouver. But it's a career hall as well. So the way people move onto the site, so here you have paid-on-call coming to the site a lot, there, they're career sites, so they're there already. So the emergency vehicles leaving is the big component, but people arriving are arriving at a much lower pace or a lower speed. But certainly here, definitely the parking would be an issue to make sure we can maintain that. But it is not unusual or nor unheard of to combine or co-locate facilities. It just has to be part of the mandate and within your timing or schedule to do so.
So the cost of building that second story?
Correct.
Has to be built to the same post-disaster standards such as lower story?
That is post-disaster.
And that building in Vancouver, I think you mentioned, is concrete and?
It is.
16 million mill?
It is. Yes, it's four stories of housing above the fire hall and it has one level of underground parking. And we had to build the underground parking because there was no other space for parking on the site. So Alison's very correct. Once you combine a building like that, it means the entire building must become post-disaster. So that is the cost that comes with doing that. Yeah, absolutely.
Just on the parking on that site that you just mentioned, how many parking spots are there for that fire hall?
For the career fire hall?
The one that you just mentioned?
The Vancouver?
Yeah.
There are 12 spots below grade and two spots above grade. But it's a very different situation in terms of the arrival because remember, there, they only ever have a crew rate. That's all they ever have on that site. So there's no training going on, there's no groups of paid-on-call groups coming to the site. You never, you always know how many groups are coming. So the arrangement of how people use that site and the needs for that from a site perspective is very different. When you have a composite or a paid-on-call volunteer department versus a career department, the site usage is incredibly different. Most of the time, the training is very, very minimal. On fire hall number five, there will be zero training on that site. Nothing. Not a hose laid, well, there'll be hoses in the apparatus space. And the aprons are very, very tight because the site is very tight. So the difference in the way groups use that, because there are no people being called and rushing to the site as well, is very, a very different scenario. But we, that's why the parking requirements were able to be less.
And David, for the expansion?
Yeah.
I mean, this is a 50-year hall. The ambulance service has made some segues and they need a sleeping accommodation. If we grew and ever needed to be a staffed, what do you call it?
Career or composite hall.
Career or composite hall.
Right.
Then that would be sleeping quarters and accommodation and that kind of thing. So it's not?
That's a good point.
Yeah, your expansion would be restricted. Yeah, your expansion would be restricted.
Yes, so over time, I have no idea. What sort of population would you normally expect to move towards a career hall rather than a?
Oh, I think it's different for.
Different, okay. Is that something that we, do we need to plan for that in our future or, I mean, I have no idea.
Well, that's one.
Sort of planning for that second floor, is there the idea with that? Have some accommodation up there for a career hall? Anybody else got anything?
Well, I guess the other thing is just because we're an island, we have to provide everything for ourselves. You're not gonna get another fire truck over here. And the other thing is the fire underwriters survey, they rank our community and our firefighting capability. And if I'm correct, for certain sizes and areas and types of fires, you've got to have certain types of apparatus. And if you don't have those certain types of apparatus, then your ranking is much lower. And, or much, I think actually, if you're not well-ranked, you're a five. If you're well-ranked, you're a three. So it just depends on, and having visited Soterna and Gabriola, the size of the land that Gabriola has is humongous. Soterna's is maybe a little bit comparable to what we've got. Hender has a huge site. So we're not building something that isn't similar to what a lot of the other islands have done just for the same reason. Hopefully, we would never, ever have to be called out for a structure fire. But if your house is on fire, I think you're gonna want them to come. So it's like having an insurance policy in a way. And the hall in North Van, I think they've got two shifts of 12 people each, I think, or eight. So it's similar, underground parking and parking. But how many does that say on Vancouver?
It's just under eight and acre.
So it's actually not that different from what's working out.
Yep, absolutely.
And the other issue is the entrance, the separate parking driveway entrances. You don't want some person trying to come out while you're trying to get in to park your car and meeting grandees, been to the medical, when they think, yeah, we're going to try that.
Yeah.
And that's, and the architects for the other facilities, sort of, they all recognize that when we talked about meeting it. Response time is critical.
Yeah, the speed of access is key. And so that idea of being able to separate those entrances and manage that as much as possible is very, very key. Yes, how, when will it happen? How many times will it happen? I can't predict that, but when it does happen, you don't want it happening when it's your place on fire. So that's one of the key things we're trying to manage with the site is the exiting and entering to the site.
Okay.
Maureen, I'm sorry, Maureen first, please.
Yeah. Three things. One was I took a look at the fire hall stats and there were 179 calls recorded in the last year. So you're looking at a very small part of the function if you're only narrowing it to structure fires. I think that's part of why the audience responded as it did. And the second, was that a question regarding the last paragraph in your report, Alison? And I just don't understand something. It's the discussion of the funding, that the long-term debt will be in the form of a 30-year bond, not a mortgage?
Yes.
Why is that reported?
That's because, nothing, it's just how, the question was, how is it being financed? And there's just a different payment structure and routine. When you've got a mortgage, you're paying down your principal as you go.
Okay.
The payment stays the same. With a bond, you're paying the same amount and it goes into what's called the sinking fund and then the whole thing's there to pay it off at the end. And that sinking fund is to make that.
Okay. And then the third question.
It was for the accounting and techy types in the.
Okay, well, I'm getting that. The third question had to do with the site preparation. You said that when Lot 1 was looked at, you'd have to go down three meters, did you say?
It was three to four meters was what the geotech anticipated of soil we would have to take out of there.
Okay. So on Lot 3, how far down do we have to go?
We don't. So what kind of site? We just have to put structural fill in if I'm understanding correctly.
So just rock, gravel?
We'll have to add structural fill to the site in order to ensure that the apparatus space are even with the road.
But it's just a slab, no concrete 12-foot retaining walls or anything like that.
Yeah, the difference really being is the slope of the site on the other one will cause you to have a series of retaining walls in order to manage it. This site, because it's flat, does not require any.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I got one more on the, I'm still interested in the multiple-use idea. And obviously, the post-disaster building is more expensive.
Yeah.
Lots of value in some ways.
Yeah.
But if you're bringing two single-use buildings together for the expensive second floor, yes, it's post-disaster, but you don't need to build a foundation, you don't need to build a roof. So presumably, I mean, I have no idea where the wash, you know, but presumably, it would still be a reasonably inexpensive option by combining those, correct?
It really depends on what you're building and trying to replace. But co-location is always a really good idea. I think what you have to do, and I caution you, is just to look at all of the pieces of that. But co-location is certainly a good, absolutely, yeah.
And also from your description, so any of the contamination, that's already contained in the bay area that you described.
Oh, for sure, yes. That's the idea, yeah.
Okay, good, thanks.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Michael?
I think one of the big buy-ins for this is the ability to move forward in time to the second level. And I know you've tried to anticipate just about everything that moves in this. And I credit you for it. When we, let's assume that the time has arrived and we do in fact want to make use of that second level. As codes, and we all know about codes constantly change, I guess you've tried to anticipate to the best of your ability so we don't then have to go and size this up yet again, this new building of ours.
Correct.
To structurally repair because someone has changed the codes and guess what?
That is correct. And that is one of the challenges that come with waiting to build the second floor. I think that that is very much the risk, is how long between now and the next time that you do that. But I, certainly it will be taken in well into consideration, foundations, the perimeter walls and so on. But you're exactly right, there, we can only predict so far into the future.
Yeah, fair enough.
And the other issue is, we have authority from the community to spend $3 million on building the bar.
Yeah.
Building a second floor would mean going back for another, running another borrowing.
I think we all accept this.
Or somebody else can walk in with a chip.
I think we just, basically, we just have to be prepared to go there and try to alleviate any real extreme expense if we choose to go up. And we went up, it's 3,200 square feet. If we left some of that for full-time fire people, not a lot of law would have left up there for housing. Be pretty scarce. I don't think we could go two floors on top of there.
No, so what happens, and maybe one thing I should clarify for you is, one of the reasons Vancouver had to be built the way it was is there's a high building limit based on the VC building code. So once you're at a certain height, you can build out of wood. And once you're in a certain area, the question is what happens to the bottom two stories in order to create a rigid frame from which the top to be built? So Vancouver, we were able to build the four stories of housing in wood, post-disaster wood. But the bottom two levels had to be made out of concrete due to the site conditions. The sites always have a classification, so the geotech will give it a classification. All of those factors combined meant that we had to build the building out of non-combustible but also out of this concrete, and it's a lot of concrete. And that enabled us to go the four stories up. So technically, we were six stories in the area and the bottom two stories are quite high. But there is also a high building limit that you must be concerned with because after that point, the whole building then must be non-combustible, which changes our construction.
What's the cost of that project?
16 million.
So Gary, you're saying though, so to go for three stories would not be feasible, is that?
Oh, no, three stories would, but it may change the nature of the base.
Okay.
And so if we were to plan for three stories, we'd need to know now.
I see.
Yeah, one story is not so difficult to continue in wood, but as we go up, it's not necessary that the additional stories would change. It's the lower story. And that would unfortunately have an impact on your budget.
And just finally, sorry, I keep asking too many questions. What you're showing us here fits within the $3 million?
That is it, yes. And so the idea is to build this out of post-disaster wood combination and steel. So we're still working on that, moving into the budgetary side.
Yeah, I think, I think industry standards was a good point you brought up. We're not going beyond what we circle in can or want to. It's not a want thing here, it's just a need.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I brought up was the land, it's flat land. You need flat land for a fire hall. You don't need flat land for housing. You know, the community lands are amenities. They are also for housing or essentials that the community needs. And I, you know, I sort of think that this is the only place we can go. Now, is that it for Council? Any more questions here? Because we're just about running out of time. Is there anybody in the audience that's got something really imperative that they can't live without saying? Okay, go ahead.
Two, I'll throw two in. Now, I think one's very easy. You've mentioned an ability to switch between EOC and fire department. You haven't mentioned the fact that they might coincide. And the second thing is you always make Fire Hall 2 sound unusable if you're all the emphasis on the things that provisioned here that don't exist in Fire Hall 2. Could you comment on that?
I'm sorry, Peter, I don't understand.
Well, the contamination issues, the separation issues.
Well, the Fire Hall 2 is just a fire hall. And that's all it was ever intended to be, was a place to store the trash.
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm getting at is that the people that have fought the fire come back to Fire Hall 2 because that's where they started from, and then they need to decontaminate before they leave. And I don't think we have the same level of facilities at Fire Hall 2. Without a shower, I'd recognize it.
You don't respond from Hall 2.
Sorry?
They don't respond from Fire Hall number 2? So they don't start there? They clear up at Fire Hall number 1, right? And then they go to Hall 2.
Not if the road's broken.
I thought the two guys that drove the tanker went straight to the tanker.
Yeah, they do.
They do.
So in response to your first question, the idea that what happens to the building when fire and EOC, because that's most likely what happens, fire is hard, right? But there wouldn't be training in that particular room. So the training rooms and even the offices can be used for dual purposes and the chief will most likely, the deputy chief will most likely be doing.
They moved that, yeah.
Yes, their offices can be used. But it's the operational quarters, I don't know if you know it, like in the back on this one. So you can see none of the operational quarters are taken.
Right, yes.
Yeah, so that's how we standard it. Exactly, yeah. So in terms of Fire Hall number 2, I can't, I don't know how I can answer that for you, but all I can say is that this building is trying to make the best of the current standards and give your team the best that they have.
I'm objecting to that.
No, but I would love to, if you want me to, number 2. But we're starting with this one, so you have a place to work from, I would say, for that.
Yeah, that's a discussion we'll have and obviously, it's a good, it's a, here, can you just sign your last name and address?
Thank you.
Yeah. What's your address?
1548 Tonsville, Build-A-Rod.
Uti?
2023.
Definitely something to look at.
Because I'm right close to Fire Hall 2, you see.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Anybody else got anything?
Bro?
Maybe just, just going back to Rob's questions and so forth. And you're alluding to the fact that maybe we have too much fire equipment here on the island. Frankly, from my own position and having lived on the island for 40 years, we don't have nearly enough. And having said that, it's because living in Kalamkoy, we've had four fires major over the years. None of them were house fires in that time. They were fires started by other, other needs, lightning started by search and rescue teams with rockets out on the sea that basically landed on Golden Island and caught the forest on fire. And our guys basically responded and dealt with it. You know, by chance, there was something like that going on and then somebody's house in Point caught fire. And then something else, there was a medical emergency going on as well. We're barely covered as it is right now. Plus the fact it's redundancy. Something goes wrong with one of our pieces of equipment, we're dead. We can't call in anybody else. We have to exist on our own. And in the event of a disaster, whether it's fire or whether it's earthquake and so forth, we will be hard-pressed to deal with what we have. So the most we can get out of that, the better it is. The last thing would be, you've obviously referenced toxic material and so forth. And I draw your attention to the fact that there were some old houses in Davie's origin that were taken down this summer. And the guys that were taking the rest wooden houses, the guys that were taking them down were in hazmat suits all summer long, decontaminating them because they were painted with lead paint.
Paint, yes.
So that's all it takes. And we've got a number of houses on board that are 60 years old. What do you think they're painted in?
Yeah, very good point, Bro. I think it's important to think that we have to be prepared. You know, we can't look back into history and say, well, we only had these many fires and that sort of thing. Yeah, it is historical and maybe we're doing a better job of not letting our houses on fire, but we do have to be prepared. And that's the level, you know, like I said, to the industry standards of being prepared for it. Anyway, if that's it.
Gary?
Yes?
So I guess our next step, which we want to do as the, is to get started on the actual working drawings. So I don't know if everybody would be willing to entertain a committee, the whole recommendation of council at this point to direct the architect to start with the working drawings and that would come to the January 14th council meeting. Do you have a resolution?
No, I'm not prepared to do that. I want to really understand this idea, the possibility of co-locating. So I'm not prepared.
So David, what information do you need?
I need a better understanding of what all the opportunities are. I think this could be something we could discuss in our strategic plan.
Yeah. Okay, but can we, do we want to ask him to give us some square foot cost for building second floor wood buildings in post-disaster standards?
Come to more, I should say this isn't fair to all of councilmen, I think.
Okay, well, I just, okay, I was just trying to figure out what kind of information.
I think it's putting your council members in an operation.
Anybody else have a step, defer that?
No, we won't do the resolution, but I'd like to know what other information they need.
Maybe if we can skip, we can talk to it at the strategic planning session.
Yeah, Maureen? Okay, you're good. All right, well, thank you very much, Kim. That was extremely informative and insightful. Thank you. John, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys coming up.
You're welcome. And if there's anything else that you need, we're happy to answer it, so anytime.
Thank you.
Gary's down there, but I don't know whether he can get it or not.
You go quickly, Mike.
Your USB stick?
Yes. You guys, will you let them get out of the parking lot first, please?
Parking lot is easy. Never seen it, so is it? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm halfway up the road in the bit, so not very.
I'm not sure, do you show them in here?
No, you're on the next call.
Oh, I just.
Must have sent some horrible off.
The obvious, nobody cares about water.
Cold Bay Water Treatment Plant update. I will be quick.
You will be quick?
Yes. Thanks for your counsel. I'm just gonna give everybody an update on the Cold Bay Water Treatment Plant. It's been a long time coming along, we're plugging along. I'll give you a little, I'll do a little history of the, how things come up to now. So back in 1997, did a long-range plan. They, I've only got a few crayons wrong, so. So they mentioned then that we would need a water treatment plant. Funny enough, on, in 1997, it said the ideal location is where we picked it now, but it's owned by private property, so we can learn a lot to build there. We did a whole bunch of studies from 1997 to 2001. We did an affordability study. We looked at different types of water treatment plants. We looked at a DAF, which is dissolved air flotation. I went to a few plants of that. We looked at slow sand filter, Wolfdenge property, he has a slow sand filter. The problem with those plants, there's a lot of waste. So when you clean your water, you have up to like 10% of your water that you're making has to go somewhere. They tried to, they, when we looked at it, we were gonna put it into the sewer treatment plant and that would just, I'd have to increase the sewer treatment plant. Wasn't really practical. Couldn't dump it into the creek. So we looked at a whole bunch of different options and we came up with a ceramic membrane filtration. Last, we did a whole bunch of, about five years ago, we sampled the lake for a whole year to find out what we need in this, and that's when we came up with the ceramic membrane filtration. The way it works, water gets pushed through a ceramic membrane and there's pressure in that which lets the water, there's no pressure, it sort of oozes out through the ceramic. It's clean water. The pores are so small that it gets rid of all of the tannins, the color and everything. And because it's ceramic, we hit it with an air shock and it cleans those filters off every minute and a half. What happens is that dirty water then gets taken to another spot. The ceramic is just the opposite. We try to suck the water into the ceramic, it gets picked up, so we get clean water again and our waste is basically solids. It's, that's a great advantage for us because we don't have to put it into the sewer plant. It becomes a solid, it'll dry, we'll put it into a drying bed and that's what we'll have. And then we'll have to look at it, see if we can add it into dirt or something like that. The only thing that will be added to it will be, it's called isopakid, and it's an aluminum to coagulant. So we have to check that out to see if we could actually add it. I've been told that tomatoes are really like aluminum-based dirt, so we might go into the tomato plant.
Yeah, this is stuff for cleaning out. There's nothing, I mean, it's not.
No.
It's not fat stuff.
It's just the dirt. It's sediment.
Yeah. Lovely stuff. We're short of it ongoing.
So that's how we come up with the ceramic membrane filtration. Then we applied for a grant, when we looked at the DAF plant, it was around $10 million to build a DAF plant. Couldn't get, we applied for a grant, it got turned down. We applied for another grant with the ceramic a couple of years later. So we got a grant of $3,890,000, 300, no, $3,890,000, I'm sorry. And 37. So that's a two-thirds, so the municipality has to come up with 1.945 million. So that's a two-thirds, so the municipality has to come up with one point nine four or five million. Raj?
If you want me to recap the financial part of it. So the total project budget for, uh, the water treatment plant is about five point eight million dollars. Three point eight is coming through the federal and provincial governments. One point nine through the federal, one point nine through the provincial. So the municipal share is one point nine, we, sorry, one point, one point nine million. We have about one point three million in our reserves. We were expecting to receive about a million dollars, which, uh, is equivalent of ten thousand dollars per lot for a hundred and fifteen lots. And the anticipation was that that funding would come in when we were ready to build the plant. However, that subdivision is going to be developed in phases. So we won't have, we're about six hundred thousand dollars short. So we will need to temporarily borrow six hundred thousand dollars to come up with a municipal one point nine million dollars. So we'll, we'll, we'll come forward to council with a report in, in the spring for, for borrowing. And, and that'll be funded through water rates, I'm assuming we'll, we'll come up with a model.
Can you just run the number again, reserve, by me again?
So the reserve balance will be about one point three million dollars. We'll have one point three million dollars in reserve.
And a hundred and fifteen lots of?
Hundred and fifteen lots, uh, it'll cost each lot ten thousand dollars to join to the water system. So when, when that subdivision is fully developed, we'll have more than enough to, to pay the loan back.
And the five.
Speaking of the raft and lake, right?
Yeah.
And five point eight million is the total cost to build, or just what we?
That was what was estimated in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, so how much are we talking about now?
Can we go ahead? Before we do any design, we're gonna have to get another estimate, but that's what we know right now.
Okay, 'cause three times one point nine in my arithmetic is six million, so roughly, so that's why I was having a little trouble.
Now, three times one point nine is five point eight million?
Yeah, and so the budget was five point eight, and we had a reserve of one point three. I was having a little trouble figuring out what the shortfall was.
Oh, I see, okay. So just to give you an idea, so anybody that wants to connect to the Cove Bay water system, it's actually, uh, we have a boundary for the Cove Bay water system. Somebody outside that that wants to join, there's a policy that we charge them ten thousand dollars, and that we put that into the reserve fund for this project, or any other council project.
Yep.
That wasn't my question, how much is it gonna, you don't know how much is gonna cost to build at this point, then? That's what I'm hearing?
We're, we're still trying five point eight, but I wanna get a better estimate than a classy estimate.
So at this point, the budget is five point eight million dollars. We'll have to get a quantity survey done, and, and a refined estimate to the engineer. But at this point, it is anticipated it's a five point eight million dollar project.
Okay, wait, when I read, I guess, uh, municipality's financial material, the way I understood this is that the reserve is already, it's a Cove Bay reserve. It's not a general reserve, it's a Cove Bay reserve.
That's correct, yes.
And so, but it would be paid fully through, um, the newcomers and the Cove Bay system. And it's, it's not another burden, oh, except for this time delay.
And there's a timing difference there now, so we, we weren't aware of the timing difference.
Yeah.
When I started, I had thought that when the, or, or, that was what was communicated to me was that when the subdivision came on board, the developer would be paying the ten thousand for the hundred and ten lots. Uh, that's not the case, it'll, it'll come in phases, so as phases are released.
Right, right. So that's, that, the municipal liability assets, it's that delay piece.
Yeah.
What's the expected development on that for us?
I don't, like, he couldn't give me a timeline, I asked the developer that date.
Somewhere between ten and twenty years.
And, yeah, somewhere between, exactly.
Someone other than, came in to bank, which hasn't started yet.
Yeah, but Mike, can I just ask, um, five point eight million, uh, that does include a contingency?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's a turnkey cost, Bob, I mean, it's not one of those things, you get the ceramics, now you've got to build a building, and someone else, and someone's gotta come and join all of them.
So the way we plan to do this is, I would hire, or Dayton Knight would do a contract. They'll be the general, so they'll look at it and they'll tender out the building. The, the actual treatment plant itself comes in skids. So, and they've suggested us that we actually go right to the manufacturer and buy the, the treatment plant. It, so it just plugs in, one end and one end. If we get a contractor to do it, they're gonna dig us another ten percent onto a million dollars or something like that. That's not fair, so we can do that ourselves, we can actually purchase it. So once we, so when we put the order in for the, for the water treatment plant, they will do a set of shop drawings, so they'll have certain dimensions that all the pipes come to. The building is a really basic.
Get to the term.
Yeah. This looks a little too fancy, I think it's gonna be, be one. It, it's gonna be one rectangular building.
It's a wall for a stadium.
So, so the little guy there that's walking through the door, he'll be undercover because it'll be one big building. So.
And where's the second floor for the accommodation?
Oh, don't go there, I'm speaking of habitation. Oh, is there a, can I hit? No, I see it. Okay, so this is the, where the actual treatment plant will be. Uh, there's a couple of chemical rooms. So you need doors for each one of those services, there's an office. So thinking that it's gonna be a public building, people wanna come in and see this, we'll come in through there, there's a little office and a washroom. You can go down the hallway, and there could be either windows, or we can let people walk around here. We keep them out of all the chemical rooms and the electrical room. So it's a really basic, basic building, and it's gonna be like here to there. This'll, there, there won't be a building there, but it'll be a roof over top. It's cheaper to build it that way.
Good point. Yeah, I'm worried.
Yeah, and delighted to see this moving forward, Bob. Sure you are, too.
I'm getting grayer as, as we speak.
So I just had a question about the, uh, the budget. There's a note in your report that says an updated cost estimate was prepared in early twenty eighteen, and noted a ten percent increase in the project budget. Is that ten percent over the five point eight? I assume it must be.
What it, no, it is, what it is, it's a fifteen percent, uh, contingency.
So we've just eaten into the contingency.
We're eating into the contingency. So really, I only have a five percent contingency now.
Okay, that's, that's why I really asked turnkey. You've got the fifteen percent contingency in, and as life would have it, we've eaten ten percent of the fifteen before we break the ground, that's the reality.
There's, so, a fancy building, and that, that's my crayon drawing, and then that's, this is on Google Earth, so the lake is up there.
Yeah.
The road and the old coronation station that we have right now is there. And I think the affordable housing is going along this road. There's a road here, and there's a trailer that goes up to Mount Garner.
Are those tanks included, or is it part of it or not?
Yeah, there'll be two steel tanks.
Yeah.
Now, depending on the cost of steel, we might end up just doing one. I, I, I just, you know, if I can't afford it, I can't afford it, but.
Yeah, how many gallons?
Uh, it'll be a million gallons. Need it for firefighting. Because you see now, the way the system works now is if there's a fire in the cove, which is, that's the biggest demand, we just take straight water from the lake, gets coronated and goes out there. This way here, we're breaking that line, or treating it and putting it into tanks. That's, that's the only downside of a treatment plant. The only downside of a treatment plant.
Yeah.
So Bob, the line, the, uh, I, I walked that site through the ones here. So the pipe basically is gonna go from that building straight down towards the school?
So, right now, what happens is, is, is the line comes down here and goes like this, gets coronated right there, that little, that little shed. So we will break into this line here, put it in, like you break in here, goes into the building, and then comes back in, goes back in. It's, it'll be right tight to the building.
So existing pipe we're gonna be using basically?
Oh, yes.
So the lake's down at the bottom with that?
No.
The lake is, the lake is right there, around the corner.
Okay, 'cause I thought the old building was closer to the lake than that, but, okay.
And the next drawing is, that's sort of, uh, if you've ever walked, this is the existing road now. The coronation building is right there. This is the start of the creek, so we can't infringe in that. This'll be our drying where we store our solids, the actual building, and two tanks.
Quit it, Roger.
Yeah.
Realize what was that, uh, that big?
'Cause we'll start what our next, our next move is to process this along, I just, just, is it, is this coming up on the?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I don't, don't have to, that's, that's what it is, good, thank you.
And I'll just say we'd be working really closely with the developer to make sure, aesthetically, it doesn't impact the neighborhoods that are gonna be put in the area.
Beautiful building, I guess.
I think, I think the idea is the, um, tanks will be hidden up there.
Yeah, and they won't be white tanks, they'll be a dark green or. I don't want them too dark because then they'll get too hot in the summer, but it will not be, uh, usually a green is sort of a standard color.
Wow, that's a, that's a real achievement, once we get that done. Want to have the clean water.
Yeah, so I saw a diagram of our construction start, so we can start construction.
So, now Daniel has to help me on this. So we've got a, a right-of-way over the property now, we don't actually own the land yet. Daniel put in, I would like to get it surveyed by the end of next week or something like that, and it'll go onto the statutory right-of-way, and then at the end of July.
The covenant essentially has its, like, either trigger by this, yeah, kid, or they'll try applying for their subdivision and peel off what they provide us, or it has a backstop, it's like July, we would get it.
We would get the land anyways. So it's just sort of in limbo right now, but there's.
Just not limbo. No, we have, in the meantime, we have the statutory right-of-way, so we can proceed.
So that's actually been written and registered?
Yeah.
So it's been quite well defined.
It's early in the covenant, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I need the survey.
We're not, sorry, not the right-of-way, the covenant's been registered.
The covenant's been registered, so we, we have, we don't really have legal funding.
Well, I think the, that's the idea of the survey, right?
Once I get the survey, then it's.
Then the right-of-way will get registered.
Yeah, sorry, I do have one more question, and, and I, I know you did that, uh, you had that little tanks, or you tried it out last year, but is this really, um, been done in a lot of other places? Or are we really parading the ground here, or?
They've used it in lots in the United States. It's actually made in London, Canada, London, Ontario. And I just was doing some research, and, uh, Grand Isle B C is putting one in, a little bigger than ours. And funny enough, W S P, or whatever the color is, and are doing it, so.
Yeah, good.
It's, the one, the one in Vicksburg where I went down, the water was a lot dirtier, it was basically from the Mississippi River, and it was really nasty water. And they've been plugging along at it, and it seemed to work good. They've been using it for fifteen years, haven't changed any membranes or anything.
What is the life cycle on it, is any idea?
They haven't worn any out yet, so they can't tell me.
It's good, I guess.
How long have they been?
Over fifteen years or something?
And what's, what's the cost of redoing those? Is that the main part of the cost?
We, we will buy some spare ones.
Yeah.
The only way you would ever need them is if an operator dropped and rode, drove over them with a truck or something. Hopefully that won't happen.
Not too often anyway.
It's just kind of down the line, but what kind of training would be needed to operate it? Or is it pretty straightforward?
It's really straightforward, but E O C P will ask for a level of training. I'm getting, my guys right now are doing level one and level two, so hopefully one of those, one of my guys will wanna just take that over.
Any other questions? That's great, Bob, thank you very much, that's really, uh, that's really interesting. I had no idea it was that, that magnitude.
If you had that, it's pretty interesting, you're right.
Okay, and now, now we'll adjourn this meeting, the committee of the whole meeting. We're gonna move right into a special council meeting. So the, uh, special council meetings, the approval of the agenda, is there anything? There's nothing on here, oh, thank you. And, um. Sorry? So, uh, let's have the recommendations, approval of the agenda, please. Thanks, morning.
Thank you, okay.
And all in favor? Thank you. And we'll move on to new business. We're gonna move to a closed council meeting. Recommendation is, the council moved to a closed meeting immediately following the special council meeting to discuss items pursuant to section ninety dash one dash A, dash E plus K of the Community Charter, which is the A section, personal information about an identifiable individual or is being considered or positioned as an officer, employee, or agent of the municipality or another position pointed by the municipality. E section, the acquisition, disposition, or appropriation, expropriation of land or improvements that the council considers as a disclosure that could reasonably expect to harm the interests of the municipality. And section K, which is negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of municipal services that are at the preliminary stages in that, in view of council, could reasonably expect it to harm the interests of the municipality if they were held in public. So we'll move to the closed. I guess we gotta, oh, sorry, oh, yeah, sorry. Second, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.